Dr. Ruby is here, now we'll call the meeting. Great. On behalf of the council, I'd like to again welcome the members of the school board and thank you for joining us this afternoon. I know we have a lot to talk about. I'd like to begin by introducing Alveda Green. To some of you, I guess most of you already know Alveda. She was, her claim to fame is that she was a member of the school board for years and actually received a national award when she was on the school board from the Council of Great City Schools as one of the leading school board members in that group. And she served previously as a member of the city council. So we have, you have a good friend here, I promise you. So, and someone who will understand what's going on, which is always...
(coughing)
All right, okay, I'll stop. Okay. And so why, and why don't I turn it over to you?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Frame and members of council, City Manager, Mr. Jones, and my colleagues on the school board, and Superintendent King. Good to see you all this afternoon. We do have quite a bit we'd like to share with you. We want to do it in a timely fashion so that we can have an opportunity for Q and A.
Yeah, Mr. Spiegel says we've set aside just as much time today as you took the other day on your seven-hour meeting in San Diego.
Which has become the norm for us. We have to be a record-breaking school board.
Well, it's not the norm for us.
Well, there are three items, as you see on the agenda for this afternoon. We will talk a little bit about our academic progress, some highlights from the first quarter, and common formative assessment results. And of course, we won't go deep into that, but you'll have this information for your, for your pleasure at your leisure. And then, of course, you are aware of the fact that we have employed DeJohn Richter, an educational planning company, to conduct a study for us. And we will talk about what we've asked of them, the purpose of the study, and where we are currently in that process. And then, of course, the 2014-15 budget planning. We started last month, and we've had a number of conversations about the budget, and are looking forward to receiving the superintendent's proposed budget in just a couple of weeks. And so, Dr. King will lead us in our discussion, and he and/or his designees will be presenting on each of these items. Dr. King?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Frame, Vice Mayor Williams, as well as the remainder of council, board members, and guests. This gives us an opportunity to give a status report and engage in some very important discussions around variables that impact the work of approximately 34,000 students, and where we are at this point. So, we always begin by reminding all of us, each of us, of the established mission and vision. And I'm not going to go into that in any extensive form, but you recall that we established the mission as a purpose for our school system, and we established the vision as the aspiration in terms of where we know we need to go, which means that we're not there today, but here's what we aspire to become. And so you'll always see that in bold print, and that is what the community of stakeholders and the macrocosm of the community said to us. And it is that we should be adamant about becoming the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. So, that level of thought will always lead and guide our work as it relates to the strategic plan. So with that said, I'll move directly to a status report relating to academic progress, beginning at the initial portion of the school system. You have before you the schematic for student achievement that is important to us. You should have seen this before. Our language and vocabulary should become more and more common around what we do, what we implement, what we believe, and how we develop tactics and strategies to see those things come into fruition. So you see those steps. Those steps are simply about ensuring that we have an aligned, viable, rigorous curriculum that is being presented each day, that reflects the SOLs required at the state level, and that we are utilizing a mechanism that is appropriate to ensure that that information is being taught in the classroom on a day-to-day basis, and we have a process for monitoring that. And so in a nutshell, that's what that schematic is about. So I won't spend additional time on that unless someone requests. So if not, I will move on to recent achievements very briefly. I think it is noteworthy to pinpoint Norview High School, and it has been invited, the school has been invited to present at the national level as a breakthrough school based on excellent student outcomes. Many times, as we work very diligently to move student achievement forward around the aggregate and around the things that challenge us the most, it seems that the positives somehow go unidentified and unknown. So it's always important to highlight a bit of that piece of the puzzle as well. So we're proud of that fact and look forward to that. In addition, recently, three of our elementary schools were recognized as Title I distinguished schools. Actually, the state refers to it as Title I highly distinguished schools, and those are listed for you. Ocean View, Sewers Point, Willoughby. You all know that Title I is a status that is given to schools based on the percentage of students that qualify for free or reduced lunch, and that is the majority of our school system as we ended the school year, this previous year, in excess of 70% of our students qualify for free or reduced lunch. And so last year, we also pinpointed some items of interest and talked to council about the fact that last year was a time to review, analyze, listen, observe, determine what the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities were for us to begin to build a package that's appropriate to move student achievement forward. And simply put, we pinpointed items which reflected that we needed to do a better job of providing the resources to teachers that allowed them to have the appropriate scope and sequence, which means that aligned document or resource that would ensure that teachers are teaching the elements of the standard that's required at the state level. When we did our review, there was clear evidence of the fact that there was some disconnects between documents and procedures that had been rolled out in the past in terms of the top curriculum and what the state expected in terms of the tested curriculum. So then that was a responsibility for us, after pinpointing that, to modify that whole process and to give the teachers the necessary resources so that children will be taught the elements of the standard that are appropriate for them to learn at high levels like any other child within the state. And so when that happens, then students post results that would cause our subgroups, in many cases, to lag behind in reference to performance. And so we talked about that, based on our review and audit, that that's where we were. So now, so much for that. So what do we do about it? What you see here is improvement journey. So September, we knew it was important. First, the first thing for us was to revamp, review, modify the scope and sequence, the curriculum, all of those things, so that teachers would receive the support and resources that are necessary to be successful with children across the board, elementary, middle, and high. And the team embarked upon that process very quickly. And so that was modified. And so in September, we wanted to go back to pinpoint again, in a very customized sense, those gaps. So pretests were given at the beginning of the school year to determine the readiness level of children to receive the curriculum. So one would easily recognize that if those boards were in place in the past, then you'd anticipate that children would come to us with gaps if there was a disconnect between what was taught and what was tested. And so we knew that and we anticipated that. So that's the reason the pre-assessment was important. And so you'll find the results of the pre-assessment in blue that was given at the beginning of the year. Based on the results of the pre-assessment, schools developed their plans to address the needs of children in a streamlined, customized sense down to the element of the standard so that we could begin to move student achievement forward, meaning moving children where they are today, here, based on the subject level that was before them. And so if you take a look at elementary, you'll see in blue the results of the pre-assessment and the aggregate at the elementary level. In green, you'll see what we refer to as a benchmark result that was given after teaching had taken place from the beginning of the school year up until around November. So again, in blue, pre-assessment indicates where did the child enter school in terms of readiness. That informed the work and the planning process for schools and teachers. Benchmark. The teachers receive that information, analyze it, and turn it into action. Once they turn it into action, that becomes a plan. You roll out the plan and implement based on what those statistics tell you about children and what they need to know. And teaching takes place from a period of the beginning of the school year up until around November. Then the green bar reflects the amount of learning that took place as a result of that. So keeping in mind starting behind for students because of what I mentioned earlier, so gaps to be closed, but customizing and honing in on what those deficiencies are so that we could begin to make progress. So in a perfect world, in terms of pre-assessments being given, I'm going to speed this up, and I won't have to say this in the next slides, but in a perfect world, in terms of pre-assessments being given, the pre-assessment is a test of the curriculum that is going to be taught that year. So you would expect that there would be some information that children would not have internalized as of yet. So research says that students ought to be right around the 30% mark when you do a pre-assessment. So when you look at our charts, you look at the blue bars, it tells you where students may have been on target in the aggregate and where students may have been lagging behind in terms of the pre-assessment. But that informs our work. So then that means that we continue to teach based on what that analysis tells us, teach the curriculum for that period of time. Then after the teaching has taken place over X period of time, which is right around October, November, we did our formative benchmark check to see how much learning has taken place aligned to the elements of the standard. When you consider that the students were starting where you see here, then we must develop what we call smart goals. The smart goal, unfortunately, based on what these results, what the results of the pre-assessment told us, the smart goal would then be around 25% mastery. We want to see at least, based on where we started, a movement toward 25% mastery. So for your knowledge, if we were beginning where we really should be, where would children be expected to perform? Really, we want to see them at the 70% plus range, okay? That's why you hear us mention raising the floor and ceiling simultaneously, but we have to accelerate the rate at which we raise the floor because you got to close those gaps. And so now, we're beginning to get a picture for every child and the needs for every child and honing in to those results from a safety net standpoint. So if you would take a look at the next slide, it takes you through middle, the same concept. Yes?
The G5 reading, there's no green. Is that an accident? On the G5 reading?
And I believe that that's because there was no change, no movement, so the green doesn't show. So the benchmark assessment was right at 35, and so was the pre-assessment.
Okay.
Right, so when we move forward to middle school, same concept applies. I won't give more commentary there, you have a chance to review that. Move forward to high school, same concept applies, you have a chance to review that. And so now, the real interest should be around, so now what? What do you do as a result of that second analysis? What we have here really represents a bulleted display of what is important for us. Identifying the strengths for each grade level, also those weaknesses, honing in on those. You've seen, you've heard our budgetary discussions last year around safety nets and the importance. So the purpose of safety nets and funding safety nets, that purpose is to be able to hone in on interventions for children based on what those results tell you. Thus, the real significance of those reading and math positions that we're utilizing this current school year. So we're able to really customize that and prioritize and push in and pull out based on what those results tell us. So that's what's happening on this page, and you have a chance to look at that as well. Leadership support, professional development, professional learning is paramount importance because what I just described in a short period of time centers on data analysis as instructional leaders. That's what that means. And so if we're going to do this work and do this work at the level that's expected and required, then we're going to begin to train building-level leaders to be better and better at doing what we just described, because it has to be a laser-like focus on the individual needs of each child so that we can begin to get that movement, because ultimately, what we want is to, of course, reach that full accreditation. But reaching full accreditation really means that we're looking at graduating our students in a timely manner, on time, so that they can go forward, enter college, and enter the world of work, et cetera. So all these things dovetail in the process. But professional learning is of paramount importance to get teachers to the point where they have the necessary tools and skills to be able to do that, because ongoing analysis for them is also important. And the strategies for that are of extreme importance as well. And I did mention the building-level leaders and central-level people as well. Okay?
Who is administering this leadership support? Central office, or have you, have outside, or have you outsourced that?
It's really, it varies depending on the needs, because our analysis first is at the central level. You know, when you do a central-level analysis, it's going to tell you that there's some common threads at the elementary level that may indicate that children are not performing across certain elements of the standard, maybe probability and statistics. If that's the case, then we have to dig deeper to determine, is that because of a lack of content knowledge with teachers, or is that because of gaps between children? And from that, we determine the kind of professional development that needs to take place at the system level. So in some cases, the system-level intervention is appropriate. In other cases, we partner with universities and other outside entities to come in and support the work as necessary. So it varies from school to school with issue to issue.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So with that, I will shift gears to the DeJohn Richter facility study. All of these things are important, even for what I just mentioned, because the whole notion of a facility and the efficiency of it, and being a warm and people-centered environment becomes very important in doing the work. So the purpose of the DeJohn Richter comprehensive study is outlined for you, and this is just a reminder, you've heard this before, those four items center on what the board has identified as items of importance for that study. So capacity, facilities, implications for renovation of spaces, consolidation, changes, closures, any of those things that come into play, all of those variables are considered. We talk about capacity, what is capacity of the current building? How many students do we currently have? And what does that mean for streamlining our procedures? But at the same time, as we do that, we have to keep in mind that student achievement also has to parallel that decision-making process as we do that. We want to streamline, we want to be frugal, we want to be good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, same time, parallel that with what we need from a student achievement standpoint. So, what you have on page 15 gives you a timeline of activity that's before us, and that will also drive our decision-making in many ways as it relates to our budgetary process. Could have implications for balancing strategies, could have implications for savings, could have implications for transformation, and the things that we need to do to position our systems, our system, our division, and individual schools to be able to get the work done. I think that's a good segue into budget planning. Of course, I'm going to ask Dr. Thornton to come forward and provide information, but with that being said, it is important for us to look at where we are, what our needs are, as driven by our strategic plan. And the last item I mentioned is that that's really the major difference this year with this discussion compared to last year. Last year, we developed priorities based on a quick analysis of internal and external data. We spent an entire year last year building a five-year strategic plan. We're in phase one, year one, of implementation of that plan. So everything we do in terms of what goes on our agenda, those things are driven by our year-one rollout of the strategic plan. And now, as we work to build our budget, we work to build it with those action plans and action steps in mind that would drive moving the strategic plan forward. Dr. Thornton?
Mayor Frame, city council members, school board members, good afternoon. As Dr. King indicated, I will provide you with a brief update on where we are in the budget planning process for 2014-15. We'll begin with just a very quick summary overview of our current operating revenue picture for the current fiscal year. Of course, we're operating a budget of 311.9 million. Of that, nearly 60% is funded through state, 180.3 million. The majority of the balance is funded, of course, through local city appropriations, 115.1 million. And then you can see the remaining sources of the operating budget revenue. In terms of local revenue for the current year, it is appropriated and allocated in two categories, if you will. The first of which is 111.8 million for our regular appropriation, and then for the first time this year, a new appropriation of 3.3 million for future debt service associated with our planned school construction initiative. So again, our total local appropriation support for this year, 115.1 million. And of course, the major state funding category, standards of quality, right on down through other state funds, total 180.3 million. And again, this is for the current year. And then the other remaining operating revenue funding sources, you can see there the second category, re-appropriated carry forward funds, 7.7 million, represent one-time revenue sources for the current year that we know when we began the budget process, and we made the decision to use this funding last year, that funding would come out of the base revenue for FY 14-15 budget planning. So again, a total 2014 approved revenue budget of 311.9 million. And the expenditures for the same amount, nearly 85% of every dollar is invested in personnel costs, 261.2 million, and the balance is in non-personnel, particularly as related to maintaining our facilities, transportation costs, and technology. Again, for a balanced budget of 311.9 million. In terms of the budget process, Dr. King mentioned that, I won't spend a lot of time. You've seen this framework, and it begins with the strategic plan, and the idea is that the strategic plan should guide the priorities and decisions that we'll make toward building a school division that can be the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. With that being said, the school board has gone to great pains to identify some priorities or areas of focus, if you will, around which budget 2014-15 decisions can be made. Three guiding questions. The first would be what existing programs must we protect and sustain in 2014-15? And you can see the three items listed under this category for focus would be to sustain the reading and math specialist initiative that was funded through additional appropriations by the city for this year, as well as continue with our safety nets and enrichment support at each school, and then to ensure that we maintain pupil teacher ratios that support effective teaching and learning. And the second category of...
I have a question. Last year, we talked about the reading and math specialists at each school. Are we adding more? Is this adding more, or is this just continuing?
Yes, just to sustain our existing level of support with reading and math.
Okay.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes, sir.
Pupil teacher ratios?
Yes.
What is that number? I mean, is there...
Elementary, the average pupil teacher ratio for K5 is about 18 to 1. Now, we've got some schools, because of the state class size reduction initiative at K3, we can see 16 to 1 in some of those schools that have higher free and reduced lunch rates. At the secondary level, middle school, it's about 16 and a half to 1. But again, when we say averages, we're talking about the result of your core classes that may be maximized, and then you have some of your higher end or some of your classes that require some remediation that will have a lower pupil teacher ratio. But the average middle school in aggregate is about 16 and a half to 1. At the high school, it's about 19 to 20 to 1. Again, you're going to have some classes, some of your higher-end classes. In terms of rigor, you may have a lower PTR or pupil teacher ratio, and then in some of your core classes where you have your English and some of your other classes, you could have 25 kids in there. But again, in the aggregate, those are the averages.
Dr. King, is that a number? I mean, how does that stack up with other divisions or what you think is necessary? Or...
Those numbers are pretty comfortable numbers to do the work. I'm sure some would attempt to debate that issue with me, because there are some examples, if we use high school as an example, as Dr. Thornton mentioned, where, for example, if you have an advanced placement course, then your numbers are going to be lower. So when you look at the total for high school with the figure that he mentioned, it does paint an appropriate picture. However, you have to use strategies in building a master schedule to make it work. So to answer your question, we're not challenged, in my view, with those numbers and those ratios at this point. And so what we want to ensure that those ratios stay at a point that would allow teachers to deliver high-quality instruction and highly effective instruction with those pupil teacher ratios that we look at. So...
Is this where we are, or is this where we're trying to get to? These numbers that you gave?
This is where we are.
Where we are. That's where we are.
And we're trying, at this point, this has been, those areas have been identified as areas we must sustain to have that effective, as Dr. King mentioned, that effective teaching and learning.
Okay.
The next category, sorry for the small print, try to get all of these under the one slide here, but I won't go through each of these. But within this category, to expand or increase existing areas of focus or programs, range from maintaining competitive position in the market for teachers and instructional leaders, right on down through some standards of quality or state staffing mandates that we must begin and continue to maintain, and again, looking at some of the programmatic areas, gifted, preschool, early learning, career and technical. So these will be areas that we currently have, but we would need to or look to expand or enhance those areas.
And under preschool, early learning, the first part is to take children off the waiting list.
Correct.
And do you still offer the $1,000 upfront initiative to new teachers?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
That didn't cost anything. Cost the...
I did it.
It was pro-ratio over the rest of the salary, you know, the rest of the year.
I needed it because I was by the house, so I took the thousand dollars.
Yeah, because that was one of the things we initiated when I was on the...
My salary was only 30,000 then.
Teacher recruiting and attention to them, and it didn't, and it didn't cost them.
School nurses. What's the current number of school nurses? Does every school have a nurse now, or what are we, what are we with school nurses?
Unfortunately, every school, every individual school does not have a dedicated RN. That's our goal.
Okay.
And we've been challenged, in part because of funding, but also just trying to identify in the market and attract and retain those highly qualified registered nurses based on the needs of those schools. So we're not there yet, that's the goal.
Is there something like, perhaps, maybe, I don't know, like maybe an apprenticeship program or something that nurses, if there's a nurse that, if there's an RN perhaps overseeing the school, that there would be RN and training or something like that that could actually be at the school? Is there, is there any kind of opportunity like that through like maybe some of the medical schools or something?
I'm looking away because I probably have the ability to answer one question. Then when you go deeper, I start looking around.
And ask any numbers.
I'll ask Dr. Harold Lanz if she wants to respond to that.
Good afternoon. That opportunity exists...
That opportunity exists. However, we've worked directly with Dr. Lindsay and Ms. Langhorn, staff members at the Norfolk Department of Public Health in terms of any hiring and other opportunities to do that. And so as Dr. Thornton mentioned, it is our hope, and Dr. Lindsay has in the last several years worked to only hire RNs, but we have looked at partnership opportunities, because as Dr. Thornton mentioned, it is difficult sometimes to fill those positions. However, we filled all of the current vacancies. There were 10 at the start of the school year, and so just recently, we filled the 10th position. And we also talked to other school districts in terms of opportunities related to floaters or partnerships to address needs when we have subs. So there come a combination of issues related to the funding, but also, as Dr. Thornton mentioned, the piece related to finding the trained RNs. But we have looked at that and continue to work with on a regular basis. Dr. Lindsay, first staff to address that.
Does the state help fund any of this?
Currently, yes. The state, we receive about a million dollars from the state, which is really about half of what we're entitled to through the DOE funding. Because the reason we only receive half that, that million dollars of a possible to me is because the state, through the Department of Health, is also providing us nurse staff. So we're receiving support from the state through the Department of Health and Department of Education. The idea is that we will bring all of our nurses into the school division as our employees. Then, two years later, we will be eligible for that full funding from DOE, that additional million dollars. We're probably, I think we're the only school system in the Commonwealth that does not have its own nurse program or staff that is still using the services of the Department of Health or the local Department of Health. So we have to transition that back to the model that's statewide. And the third category of funding consideration or guiding priority is that to initiate new programs or activities. And right here, we include just two at this point, and that would be the potential for differentiated pay or incentives for hard-to-fill schools and/or positions. Again, these would be aligned with the division's strategic plan. And the second and final area of, under consideration for a new initiative would be the creation and development of an open campus high school program or academy. It wouldn't be a separate standalone high school, but it would be an academy in a separate In terms of our continued budget planning, of course, you know, at this point in time, we, the former governor, McDonnell, has released, released his proposed budget for the next biennium, and that becomes the basis around which we will develop our budget proposal. And then we will continue to monitor the General Assembly actions, Senate and House, for what will eventually become, hopefully at adjournment, the General Assembly's budget. But based on the Governor McDonnell's budget, we would expect to see some additional funding due to re-benchmarking. And the bottom line, based on Governor McDonnell's, former Governor McDonnell's proposed budget, is that we would see a very moderate increase in state funding of 1.3 million dollars. So we would, based on the governor's proposal, we would go from 180.3 million to 181.6 for, again, a, a very moderate increase of 1.3 million, which is less than 3/4 of 1%. And this is due also, in part, to a projection for a decline in enrollment for next year as well. So again, normally, you would see in re-benchmarking, probably a, a 3% increase in state funding. However, because, again, of our decline in enrollment or projected enrollment, we, we don't have the opportunity to take full advantage of re-benchmarking. How many is that? How many students are we projecting? We are projecting that our average daily membership will go down by approximately 390 kids for next year. And that's about 1 and 3%, which is pretty consistent with what we've been seeing the last several years, anywhere from 1 to 1 and 1/2% decline.
Are other school districts seeing declines in enrollment?
A lot of your urban districts, yes. Some of your, and some of your rural districts as well. But, but then you have some, if you will, suburban districts in the region here. Of course, you would see Suffolk would be expecting to see probably an increase. And then you would see in the Richmond region, you would see some of your surrounding communities of the city of Richmond, your Hanovers, your Chesterfields, your Henrico's. And of course, Northern Virginia, as the economy continues to improve, Northern Virginia also will expect to see increases in enrollments in some of those communities.
Have we applied for Race to the Top grant?
We have.
Yes, we have.
And we receive-
Twice.
Twice, okay.
And we will continue. However, at this point, we've not been successful with securing those funds. You, you are probably aware of the fact that we are not a common core division or common core state.
That was the question I was going to ask you.
Right. And so, you know, Race to the Top is really supported from a common core concept. And so I'm sure that ties into it, but that doesn't stop us from continuing to take on that challenge.
That's my common core question, yeah.
So based on the Governor McDonnell's budget as introduced, that is, again, subject to change by the House and the Senate and the General Assembly, our current projected and preliminary budget gap, or the difference between our estimated revenues for next year and our estimated expenditures for next year, is 13.7 million dollars. And what is driving that 13.7 million dollar gap, budgetary gap, is a net decrease in revenue, and this is due, again, in large part, to the removal or elimination of that one-time funding that we closed this year's budget gap with. And then, of course, we have some mandatory expenditure increases, particularly that second item there, increase in mandatory benefits costs, and that's related to the ongoing increase in VRS costs. The VRS contribution rate for employers, mandatory, is increasing by about three points. And for us, that equates to a net of about 5.2 million dollars in increased VRS costs, costs that we cannot pass on to employees, costs that we, as the employer, must fund.
Are you still offering incentives, the 100-day incentives for retirees to stay in the insurance? They have 100 sick days, and they get to stay in the insurance, but they have to pay the insurance. Are you still offering that to retirees?
Retirees are still eligible to participate in the group health insurance program. Yes, ma'am, up until the age of 65.
Oh, and the age of 65, when they go on social security, okay.
And the other items, expenditures that are driving the 13.7 million dollar preliminary budget gap would be the addition of eighth-grade program at Crossroads. When we moved into Crossroads as a K8 facility, we decided to add the middle school grades on an incremental basis. So this year, we added seventh grade. Next year, we are planning to add eighth grade. So that will require some additional teaching staff, core teachers, and resource teachers, a total of five FTEs, or teaching positions. And then the continued phase-in of the school nursing program. And then to begin-
FTE, FTE, maybe?
Full-time equivalent or a position, a full-time position.
An ITRT?
Instructional Technology Resource Teachers. The state has a mandate that every school division have at least one for every thousand students to assist teachers in integrating technology in the instructional program.
You're currently, you currently have five of those.
We currently have five.
You need to add, because we're not meeting-
Correct, yeah, correct.
The state requirements.
We're required to have 28. We currently have five. We used to, well, I say used to, at one point, we were in full compliance, and with the budget cuts, we had to begin to make some adjustments. Now, we have to put them back. So some of these things have legacy decisions. I mean, have any of that?
We're supposed to have 28, and we have five.
Currently, yes. We, at one point, we were in full compliance with the 28.
Maybe 28 is too many?
Well, not by state requirements.
I mean, not be by the state requirement, but the state requirement is not realistic. Here's what I'm saying. Maybe 28 is too many, and you went to five. That was realistic.
Well, we went to five because it was a- Exactly. That's what I'm saying. The reason that our, I guess our predecessors went to five is because it was a cost-cutting measure.
I understand.
Which has an ongoing legacy for that decision.
And again, these are IT-
ITRTs, Instructional Resource Teachers, to assist the classroom teacher in integrating technology into the curriculum and the delivery of instruction.
So again, I go back to, we have like all these colleges and universities with all these young people who are probably looking for internship opportunities to get credit for college. Can we not partner with them in order to, maybe it won't fill the state requirement, but it would at least fill the function or, or to some degree, fill the function so that the information that the children need to learn is, is getting taught until we can get to the 28 that we're actually supposed to have?
The unfortunate thing is that we, the state requirement is such that we have to make sure that the individuals that are assisting the teachers are, meet the highly qualified requirement that the state sets forth. So unfortunate thing is that we can't bring in an intern, if you will, who would have probably the prerequisite skill and experiences and education to really support the teacher in that area.
But I don't mean to get credit for it against the 28 that we're supposed to have.
Right.
But I mean, just in a practical sense, to deliver the, to help deliver the information. We can't do that either?
I've never seen that model.
Okay.
And I've never seen anyone test the model.
Okay.
And that, there are those type of students out there that, that can assist us in that, to be honest with you. And my colleagues on the curriculum instruction, if you want to add. That's that second question that I-
Okay.
Is that?
Can I ask you a question on this?
Yes, sir.
On this slide?
Yes, sir.
I see what's driving, what you say is driving the budget gap of the 13.7 million. But going back to your wish list, on the wish list was the pre-K, taking the children off of that waiting list. I take it either that's already in the budget, or it's not even, it's not contemplated for this year?
It's not in the budget. It's not a part of the 13.7. It's not part of the gap. This is just where we are to sustain the current program and then to address some of these mandatory cost strappers.
Okay.
So that would add to the gap?
It would add to the gap.
That would add to the gap.
Raises would add to the gap.
Correct.
Possible CIP projects could add. That's separate, but that could end up adding to the other side.
Additional costs.
Do we have the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wouldn't say that.
Do we have the $1 million in there to maintain the current class size that we have for our pre-K four-year-olds? We discussed that in, in our recent warm session.
Well, what Dr. Gabriel is referring to is that in the governor's budget for the next biennium, we receive approximately 7.2 million in at-risk four-year-olds or state-funded preschool, its share of it. For next biennium, they've changed, the DOE changed its calculation model for determining how much each school division will qualify for. In doing so, it's using a different source to determine how many kids in your community need those services. They were using, as I understand it, they were using as a source to determine how many kids, how many four-year-olds are in your community or will be in your community, they were using data from the Virginia Employment Commission. They've changed that, and now they, being Department of Ed, they're using their own in-house calculation, which relies on our recent kindergarten enrollment trends. So they'll say that, based on your kindergarten enrollment trends, we can use that as a basis for saying how many kids you have in the pipeline, if you will, as four-year-olds who will become kindergarteners. So the change in that methodology has resulted in a million-dollar reduction to Norfolk City Schools for next year. That reduction on the revenue side is factored into this 13.7 million.
But do you factor in there the, the costs of educating these kids? So you're, I mean, have you backed that out?
No.
Okay.
The, we have not reduced the program at this point.
Even, even though the state is taking money away from you because you don't have as many kids?
Correct. Because they're projecting that we won't have as many kids.
Correct.
But we have a waiting list of kids.
So at this point, right. But their data source for determining how many kids we have that they will fund has changed.
Oh, or unqualified qualifiers.
Is that, is that clear? Kind of the process? Their end result is that we'll have a million, it appears that we would have a million hours less based on Governor McDonnell. Of course, the Senate and the House could take that up as an issue. We haven't heard that they will. But we haven't changed our current program on the expenditure side to reflect a reduction in the number of kids to be served.
We, it, it's important that we also continue to watch bills that go through the General Assembly, because what ends up happening is there's these people who get elected to office and become delegates, and they get a wild idea, and they turn it into a bill, and they don't realize the full ramifications of when these bills get passed. For example, the one bill that said that all kids in high school will have a virtual classroom experience by the time they graduate. So we'll just throw that on the school system, and, and they'll have to find a way to get the virtual experience. Another bill, every kid's going to have to take a personal finance class by the time they graduate. Well, where are you going to get the teachers to teach that class? You throw that on there as well. I was reading the headline the other day, I got scared because they said something about training for human trafficking. Turns out, it's just for people who want to become teachers, and I was getting scared that that was another requirement, that they were going to make teachers go get training on how to identify human trafficking. However, they did pass a legislation that said every staff member who goes to certification has to go through CPR training. So now you have all these teachers that are up for renewal, because every five years you have to go through renewal. They all have to go get certified for CPR, and it has to be a certain type right cross. Well, who pays for that? So does the district say each teacher has to go pay for that themselves? Or do they try to provide it, and they've got to fund the trainers to do this? And so every time, there's somebody up there that just gets this wild hair and comes up with an idea, and then they just keep on passing it down to us, and then we have to absorb those costs. And there's, there's probably, there's probably a handful of those, Dr. Simmons probably knows all about them, that are up in risk room right now, that are just going to pile more costs and more things, and they're not giving the district any more money. So we have to stay in touch with our delegates and our senators and make sure that they know that if you're going to do these things, then give us the money, show us the money to pay for it.
And the last two items there, year-one implementation of the open campus academy, a million dollars.
Can I, can you give us a definition of what the open campus is?
I'll begin. Open campus, well, let me begin by saying, you have heard us describe some needs in the system. If you consider middle school, we have what is referred to as over-age-for-grade classes, which means that some of these children in middle school are 17 years old. That shouldn't be. And so, however, that does not mean that these are not students that we cannot build a plan around so they can get back on track and get them graduated and ready to enter college or career readiness, et cetera. So long story short, we have, we must have a non-traditional approach to address the needs for those students that are over age for grade in our middle schools. And we have approximately, how many students that fit that description? Couple hundred, maybe? Right around that?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the number's not small, so we have that.
What'd you say?
Oh, there's far more than 200 or 300.
Right, in middle school. So you got some 17-year-old students in the middle schools. That shouldn't happen. All right, so that's an issue that we must address and get them on track. We also have students on the high school grounds that are behind in credits to the point that they cannot mathematically graduate based on the needs of traditional high schools. So the way that you get those students back on track is to provide the necessary credit recovery through the non-traditional approach. And if they're missing Algebra I or several math classes, then you give it to them in a self-paced mini-mester approach, but you can't do it on the regular school ground. So we have X number in that caseload on our high school grounds right now. Across all five of those high schools, we have X number in each one. The third piece is the- The third piece is the, consists of those students that have already dropped out and that we really need to attract back to get them to the point where they can be productive to society in a way that they can become employable and, and receive, and secure in many cases, a high school diploma as well. It's a three-pronged process with open campus and what it should do. And the research is very clear around urban systems like ours, or systems period like ours, that if you do not have that mechanism in place, then you're going to really struggle around getting to the point of decreasing your dropout rate, getting to the point of having children graduate in a timely manner, because the whole notion of the over-age-for-grade in middle schools is already a track that you can follow for dropout. And so, in, in short form, that's the purpose of beginning to do the studies. And so we sent some study groups across the, across the jurisdiction outside of the state and other areas where open campuses have already been established, looked at the formula around success for doing what we need to do, and built a proposal around what we need to do so that we could begin to roll it out to address these needs.
This would be one physical location, is that what you're saying?
Yes. And, and, and proposing it as a program, not like, not a, not a standalone school separate to, to, as a separate number, but a program much like what we do now in our Rosemont program. So that's what that's about.
Again, 13.7. So then the question becomes, how do we balance this preliminary gap? We look at some of our non-school-based operating budgets. Of course, we've given instruction to reduce those budgets compared to where they are now. We realign expenditure-based budgets with historical costs. Basically, we look at, we've looked at our cost trends in utilities and some other areas, high-dollar areas, and we try to realign those or reduce the budget going forward based on recent history. But again, we don't want to reduce it to a point where if we have an unusual winter, if you will, for utilities, that we can't respond to that, those additional costs that we didn't anticipate. So we want to, we don't want to cut too much in those areas because we won't have the flexibility to respond to circumstances as it relates to facilities and, and non-personnel costs. We'll continue to look at currently vacant positions for possible elimination. Many of those positions are just a result of a normal turnover in a school division. So we don't have many opportunities, but we're going to look and we're going to determine if we can, in fact, reduce some of those vacant positions. We realigned staffing with recent enrollment decline, and this gets back to that whole PTR class size matter that we talked about earlier. We'll look at central office staffing. We'll also.
Is there anybody left to cut?
Well, we, we had that conversation.
Three years, they've cut people every year for, what, four, almost four years.
Right.
And it's one of the small, I think you did a chart one time comparing our central admin to other people, and it's down.
You're right.
And there's, is there any, I mean.
You're absolutely right, but at this point, we're, we're going through the process, and if we can get one potential, it may save one teaching position. It may volunteer me. But at any rate, we, we also go through the annual process of looking at recalculating our compensation base, because we don't want to incrementally grow that. We want to build a compensation base that reflects what our current costs are for personnel. And we'll get some savings off of that. And then finally, we will attempt to identify additional revenue sources as we did this year. So those are the potential balancing strategies. And then the board has also asked us to engage in a, a multi-year needs assessment or planning with a five-year outlook, particularly in the areas of technology, of course, capital improvement, our existing facility maintenance needs, of course, new facilities, and then our instructional programs as it relates to early learning or preschool, professional development in maintaining a highly qualified and effective instructional leadership staff. Yes, ma'am.
Now, that was what I was working on when we did that $1,000 upfront pay. And another thing we did to, do you still have the Apples for Teacher Program? That helped the teachers who were already here. That was something we thought was good for the teachers that were already here, the Apples for Teacher Awards Program. Okay, that was something else we did too. But teachers who were already in the.
We do have the foundation, the Education Foundation that has combined a lot of the award ceremonies into one together in educational award ceremony. Yeah, and all those different, because what we found was, we had this award ceremony, that award ceremony, and, you know, three, four, five different award ceremonies. So what we did was we combined them all to one.
But these two were definitely designed for teachers.
This is not what the foundation.
That wasn't, that's not for teachers. The $1,000 upfront was to, to entice teachers to come to Norfolk, and the Apples for Teacher. You know, we have the Teacher of the Year, but we have other good teachers who are doing outstanding, so we used to give them a brass apple, you know. You remember that time?
With Bell, the School Bell Award.
Yeah, that's what it was, I'm talking about Apple for Teacher. It's School Bell Awards, it's not apples. I'm thinking about another school.
Things have changed.
It's School Bell, School Bell.
They have changed with all those budget cuts.
Okay, that was School Bell, all right, okay.
There's, you know. But it was, those are nice programs.
It's School Bell, that's right, that's what it was. I'm talking about Apple for Teacher, that's another program.
So the final slide here, what's next? We will continue the work with the Budget Advisory Committee, which is a school community group of stake, representative group of school community stakeholders that Dr. King convened. And basically, we are working with that committee to share with them some of the challenges and some of the strategies that we're looking at to address the challenges, to get their feedback, and hopefully consensus on understanding why we have to make some of these tough choices and what the implications are. And then we'll continue with our budget balancing strategies and to ensure that the budget is aligned with the five-year strategic plan, culminating in the superintendent's presentation for 2014-15 on February 19th.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Dr. Conley?
Yes, sir.
In regards to the budget, now, do we lease our school buses or do we buy our school buses?
Repurchase.
Okay. And I, and how long do we keep them before we replace them?
The state recommends a replacement cycle of about 15 years, a useful life. We have some that are at 15 and some that are older. What we try to do is for those that exceed 15 years, we may take them out of the day-to-day circulation and use them as backups or sub, if you will, in our reserve fleet. But we, we, we definitely need to maintain and refresh our school, school bus replacement cycle. The city has been providing money, most recently, last year, 2.1 million, where we were able to replace a number of buses. This year, 1 million that we were able to replace a bus. A bus now costs about $80,000 apiece for a regular ed bus, not a special ed bus. But we don't have anything in our base budget, operating budget, to address the ongoing school bus replacement needs. Nor do we have anything for our ongoing technology replacement needs.
Do the new school buses have seat belts?
No, no, they're not a requirement. So at this point in time, we do not have seat, the question was, do the new school buses have seat belts? It's an option, and it's not required, so right now, we, we don't pay for that option.
How does the Camp Young facility operate now? How does the program work now?
From an instructional standpoint?
Yes.
Dr. Sevigny?
We utilize Camp Young as an instructional satellite facility for all of our third, fourth, and fifth and seventh grade students in our Title I facilities, and they each have the opportunity to spend as much as two weeks at camp rotating through the different literacy centers that we've tied into science literacy as well as math literacy. So it is funded with Title I dollars, but we use it as an instructional satellite for our Title I schools.
Okay, thank you. That's how it was used when I was there. And me and this, let me add this caveat, me and this is Black History Month, and I guess all of you know that Camp Young is named for Elamong Young, whose husband founded the black newspaper, The New Journal and Guide.
And going forward, the facility maintenance cost for Camp Young that previously had been funded through Title I, going forward, we are no longer, we will no longer be allowed to use Title I funds to support the facility maintenance cost. So that's where you have that line item there for 400. The utilities, the maintenance of the, the infrastructure there.
Is Camp Young being looked at in this facilities report as whether or not that's a big use of our money?
No, ma'am, that was not part of the scope of the DeYoung-Richter study.
And is the capacity at Camp Young at 100%? Is it used 100% of the school?
It is used, you know, it's in the high 90s in terms of every school day, there is, there are students there taking advantage of that. During the summer, it's not used as much, but during the regular school day, there are students there almost every day.
What used to be a source for swimming instruction.
And there is a pool there, but we've kind of leaned away from the pool, and it's turned more into an environmental science or water safety experience for students, and we're looking at other options in terms of teaching the actual swimming to secondary.
If I remember, it was a pretty expensive, valuable piece of property. I'm curious why we're not looking at that in the facilities report.
Well, there are also not traditional classrooms there. There are many buildings, and students rotate through the centers and set up in a center-type situation, so students have the opportunity to rotate through different centers in groups of 10 or 12 throughout the day. And we will have as many as 15 or 18 groups of students clustering and rotating through those stations on any given day.
I, I wasn't expecting to get laughed at by Dr. Houston when I told him that I watched all seven hours of your meeting the, the other day. Thanks, Dr. Houston. But I did, I was painting while you guys were meeting. So it's good use of time. I don't know which one was like watching paint dry. But at first, I want to thank the school board members for giving up that time. I could quote Warren and say, I feel like the little boy with Emperor, saying the emperor has no clothes. Is that, yeah, they think that's funny, you guys don't. But anyway, my point is, in your balancing of this, I want to highlight something that Courtney Doyle said there. I didn't see anything about closing school buildings, and I know that you're still kind of waiting for DeYoung-Richter to come back. But, and I, it's easy for me to say this because it's not my ward, but Willoughby Elementary just seems like, I mean, we're, we're keeping it open, but you could balance your, some of your staffing issues out by moving some of those teachers to other places and finding something to do with the students that are there. It's such a small school, and we're keeping it open, or, or as Dr. Gabriel said, the highlight, you know, a, a possible pre-K center that we could offer a tuition-type program where people could pay tuition to go to Norfolk post schools at a 50% basis. But I didn't see that in your presentation. I thought that there was, those were both great ideas, and I've said, it's not anything new. I've said, I think sometimes you have to give in order to get, and I don't see that risk of looking at closing some facilities that with enrollment going down a little bit, we need to really look at that. And I think that council can stand by your side if that's a tough decision that the school board has to make. We just, fiscally, we can't afford to keep buildings open. They're not producing at 100%. We just have to look at that. And I, I, I know you'll have more conversations, but I was hoping to see that on the list.
The, the Willoughby and all of the other K-12 schools are part of the scope of the DeYoung-Richter study. We didn't want to prematurely add any of that information at this point because it hasn't been completed, it hasn't been fully vetted with the community. We are scheduled to have a community forum next week to share some of the options that are under consideration, some as to how we can maximize the use of our facilities, whether it be through reprogramming or reconfiguration. There are many options on the table, and to add something right now, what we've learned is that sometimes when we add things, they begin to take on a life of their own, and it would be premature to do that right now.
Let me ask you this, what do you need, with the understanding of the significance of universal pre-K? And you came to us, I think in November, and gave us the idea of be a 4.5 million to take, I assume, the 600 children off of the waiting list. What do you need from us to tell you to, I mean, do you need us to vote on it and tell you make it happen? What do you need to, with the understanding that that's a significant issue when it comes to, to early learning and success in life? What are we going to do? You came to us in November, you've done a great job on what I've seen with the status report, tremendous job. But that, that's, that's something we just can't push aside. I mean, do you need to come to us, put it up there, and then we have to hash it out here with the manager? What do we, where do we need to be? Because that's, we have 230, I understand, on the waiting list that are four-year-olds. You've got 600 three- and four-year-olds. Is taking what Tommy said just now and pushing it back maybe a year, and we see where we are, but then that's another year lost. And why do I feel that we're, it's, it's almost a generation we're losing every time we don't get this done? Maybe I, I'm, I'm seeing too much into this. I think that we've, some of us have learned a lot in the last six months. Where do we go? What, what does it take? And I'm not fussing at you, don't get me wrong. If I was fussing, it'd be different. It's a whole different tone. But where, where do we need to be? Where do we need to go? What do you need?
I, I feel that you want to. Sure, the only thing I would, I would say there is that we all know and understand that that's a great need and an important piece to student success in this city. The other competing items as well, when you look at that five-year outlook in terms of cost and needs in, in areas of technology, professional development, safety nets and enrichment, and what we're seeking to do is really crystallize the prioritization of these. If we, what we, if we were to say to you today, and I'm one board member speaking here, we need X amount of millions of dollars for pre-K, well, knowing that we have these other needs as well that we haven't quite prioritized, now, something else would have to take a backseat to that. And so we want to be really, really clear on our five-year outlook, what are those other competing needs, what are other resources that are available to meet some of those other needs before we simply make that request, in my opinion.
I, I understand it taking, I understand other items taking a backseat, but this issue is not even in the car, at least from what I've seen. I mean, I, to me, it's just so important. It needs to be somewhere that we know that, are you going to come to us next year and say, give us a million dollars to peel off so many children off of the waiting list? I mean, that's what I expected, and maybe I'm looking at this too simply.
If I could, I think the idea is, I think most of us on the board feel very strongly that we need to get the waiting list cleared, and that would be year one, and we'd even like to do that this year if we could. Now, what it's going to take, though, is for us to look at the budget as a whole. We're going to come back and say, we're probably going to come back and need more than 115 for you all. In addition to the 13, then there's pre-K on top of that potentially, and there's might be maintenance, and then there might be technology on top of that. So I think today's discussion helps you all understand that 115 was the local source last year. We have 13. We still need to look at some cost-cutting opportunities from the school division, no question. But on top of the 13, there might be technology, there might be capital, and then there, we do want to do pre-K. And we definitely, year one, want to get those wait lists off, those children off the waitlist, and then year two, everybody. And then year three, do we go to pre-K three? So, I mean, we've got to start with fours, waitlist and more. So I think today's discussion helps set the tone for what you might see from us in a few weeks, which is going to be more than maybe the 115.
But with that, an effective pre-K, what can we expect from our children further down the road? And the technol is important, but, and, and the other things you mentioned are important, but how do we protect our, our tax dollar in education if we don't really start at the bottom, at the very? With the pre-K, is it the facility is not available or what?
It's a combination.
Because, I don't know, I think I might have asked Dr. Houston a few years ago, what was. One of the school board members gave me a figure of, I don't know how many, maybe $200,000, $250,000. If facilities are a problem, then is there any way we could, and I've mentioned this the last time we were together, use Old Dominion University and Norfolk State University and divide those children up that we have on the waiting list and put them in their program? And that program certainly would have to coincide with what you expect, you know? And that's, that's only if facilities are the issue. And, and it would probably be about $230,000 per, per university. But everything you said about being important, I think we protect our, our budget dollar by having children ready at the beginning. And let me ask another, a couple of questions if I could. In regards to hard-to-field schools, who, who controls that? You or the teacher that you're trying to put into a school? And when I say you, I mean administration teachers.
I mean, in terms of how we assign teachers?
Well, you know, there's a, there is a, an expression about hard-to-field schools. So if you assign a teacher to a school that's a challenge, does that teacher come back to you and say, I don't want to go there? Or you say, this is the school you're assigned to?
Well, the discussions now that we know we are, we should have been having prior to, but we're certainly having, centers on what we call the best fit for a school. Because you are expected, we should be expected, to assign educators to schools based on their readiness for the school. For example, if you are a new graduate from college, I just use that as an example, did you have pre-service experience that would prepare you to begin to address the needs that, that some of our schools will present? Like children with gaps that relate to phonemic awareness or the lack of letter and number recognition? So if you didn't have that in your pre-service experiences, then that may, that might possibly, might not be a good candidate for that particular school. So now, that changes the way that we do our work in terms of building a pool of highly qualified candidates for what we have referred to as hard-to-field schools because they have to be ready to deliver those services. The other piece is that we know that internally, we have to build our professional development department to equip teachers at a higher level to be ready to go into those schools to do so. And so we control that piece in terms of training the teachers to develop the skills that are necessary to go into what we refer to as a hard to staff school. That, in addition to widely recruiting in jurisdictions that already send students out from a pre-service experience, to, to come with the toolset that they need, skillset that they need. So it's a combination of those.
Yeah. Now, Lindenwood Elementary School has approximately eight new, brand-new teachers, you know, or maybe more. And that, to me, for, for that particular school, that's a school that needs a teacher with more experience. None of you around on the school board were here when Norfolk resegregated elementary schools. And certainly, as a school board, you're not responsible to what your predecessors promised. But when that happened, the school board promised that schools like Lindenwood and, and maybe Jacobs would have more experienced teachers, more teachers with advanced degrees, more books in the libraries, certain technologies taking over that little bit. And that has, you know, as, as the different school boards have evolved, that has, has gotten lost. So that is still a great concern. Another thing that, that I was sitting here and I was writing down in regards to experienced teachers and things like that, with, you know, years ago, before the early eighties, Norfolk had junior high schools. And the school superintendent in the mid-eighties went to the middle school. And when they went to the middle school, it took all of the explorations for skilled labor, auto mechanics, drafting, woodwork, electrical shop, metal shop. Our schools had those shops in there. Now, with all the construction that we have going on in Norfolk, a lot of our students have not been prepared to be skilled or semi-skilled. And so how does a student get to, over at VOTEC, we might not call it that now, but over at VOTEC, you know, how's a student get there to determine if they want to take a path as a skilled laborer?
At this point, of course, we, we have maintained Norfolk Technical Center, and it has various pathways to accomplish that. We also have examples of some of the sample programs that remain in the traditional high schools to accomplish that. But I'd ask anyone from teaching and learning or any other department to speak more definitively about those programs that are in the high schools as well as what we offer at Norfolk Technical Center.
Each of our high schools have more concentrated or specialized programs unique to leadership or mechanics or some type of scientific field. The more traditional programs that you're referencing are still primarily housed at Norfolk Technical Center. And those opportunities are open to all of our high school students and then many adults who take advantage of those opportunities during the evenings. Our middle school students have the opportunity to experience those in very limited fashions through the exploratories or the connections classes that are currently available at our middle school level. We're working to revamp the middle school opportunities for students so that there is a greater degree of opportunity for students across the city at the middle school level, preparing them before they go into the high school level.
Do we still have night school?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. And all of the high schools are where?
We offer it at Norfolk Technical Center through the apprenticeship program, but also the evening school resides at Granby High School.
Okay. Is that FSO dated with that?
Yes, there is.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Paul, if I could, just in all fairness, you know, that was Dr. Gabriel, there's so many doctors around this table handing me this document. It looks like with regard to the universal pre-K, it's fair to say that you all are working on a five-year plan. And, and I appreciate her handing it to me, showing where you all look to be five years out, and it's laid out here. So if this is in your discussion phase, then by all means, it's something that I would want to see, and I know all of us do, Paul especially, with the poverty commission. I know what Paul's learned from that, as we all have. Would like to see that, if on a policy perspective, pushed through. Because I know as we sit here, every one of us would support what you're doing. In fact, accelerating hopefully what I, what I see in front of me, so.
The issue's funding. It's, it's paying for the teachers. That the state doesn't provide the funding for those extra pre-K classes, so we have to pay people to teach. I think you have the space. I think that's probably.
Well, there's some space issue.
Right. Depending on part of your neighborhood, but it's mostly staffing. It's funding.
That's also one.
Yeah.
But the new governor, the new governor has said that pre-K is a priority to him. I mean, I know we're working off of.
The president said.
We're working off of the previous governor's budget, but the new governor has said that that's a, you know, that's a priority. So I don't know what his.
The president just addressed it.
It can be his priority, just the priority of the house.
The president addressed it, the governor addressed it, the mayor has addressed it.
Now we just got to see what the money is.
But again, the issue is funding.
You're in good company, Paul.
Yeah. This city is as a, as a fairly strong history of supporting pre-K.
Yes, they do.
I mean, we have almost 2,800 kids, is what I understand, in pre-K right now in the city. And that's the second highest in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I mean, except for Fairfax County, which has nearly a million people, behind them, we, we are, if you take them off, and they only have about 400 or 500 more kids in pre-K than we do. So we have a long, I mean, that's to say, you know, we do a lot, but we need to do more, for sure. And we need to get to these fourth, these kids who are four-years-old, in my opinion. You know, in some, in a face process. I'm glad you're looking at a face plan. But this council has always supported, you know, a strong pre-K program. We know that the state doesn't provide any funds for the teachers, we have to pay for them ourselves. But, you know, if we're ever going to start this, I've heard Dr. King say, we're going to have to own the, we have to own this problem, right? And that's part of owning it, is getting to them younger and younger.
And frankly, our intent is, that plan that you saw, Council Pergiro, is that we would start at this fall. I mean, the intent is, the year that we're talking about is this fall.
It shows.
But if you, if you get those 600 kids and, and then they stay for kindergarten and first grade, then you get money from the state for them. The problem is, is that if they don't come in, then they end up going to a private program and possibly never entering the doors of a public school. So the question is, is Dr. Gabriel said, how do you capture those families and get them to stay in a quality public school system, which we do, we are? Once they get in there, they're going to have a good experience, sort of a great teacher that's going to prove to them that they need to stay here and get an education. We just can't get them in.
I'm going to ask the hard question here. Every one of us feels really good about preschool. Does the data support it?
The data around early learning is, is clear, in terms of what it means, student achievement.
Because when we were doing this, it wasn't clear. And, and it begs the question, that we've done a really good job with it, but yet we're still struggling.
You know, you, it is more than providing pre-K and saying you're providing it. It's how you structure it to prepare the child to be ready for kindergarten and beyond, and to be ready to read on grade level and above by the end of third grade. When your focus is really on those themes, then that's what you do.
The data clearly demonstrates that those children that had pre-K are doing well at kindergarten, but does that advancement continue in their fourth and fifth grade?
I think y'all may be talking about two different things.
Two different things, okay. I think Dr. King is answering from the overarching perspective what research shows in terms of investing in pre-K. I think as a former school board member, you probably looked at data like I look at data, where we need to see children that we currently have in pre-K and look at our on-time graduation rate and being able to track whether or not the children that are going through our pre-K as they progress through the system, how are we seeing their outcomes on the other end? I think that's something that we should.
And we've got some long-term data, we should, because we've been doing this for a while.
I agree.
And it's a question that we have to make sure we know. And I'm not saying I'm against this prioritization, but I'm also excited about doing this. But if we're talking about this, as, as Mr. Riddick is saying, as an investment in our future, I still want to make sure that our priority is also in the other 12 grades that are going through now. And I know I keep singing this song, but I still really think the Career and Technical Academy was a really good investment for our, our school system. And I'm disappointed that it's not on the five-year budget plan.
It's on the list for priorities along with early learning. It's there.
So where is it? I see the open campus.
CTE school, definitely. Yeah, it's on the.
I see, I'm looking at the multi-year needs assessment by your view. I saw it way back on the other.
Yeah, it's on, it's on our priority list for discussion, for discussion in terms of what the board is going to riddle down to their priorities, along with open campuses. Because we don't know that open campus is going to be funded.
But not open campus right now is what you're budgeting for?
It has been, we've costed it out in terms of what it will be if it is funded.
Right.
But the board has not made a decision that it's going to fund open campus either.
Is there anything on that budget for the, the Career and Technicals?
Add it into the gap that we, no, not for Career and Technicals. If that gap, that gap reflects this year's budget, 14, 15, the gap you're referring to, the CTE is, is still very much a part of our five-year priorities.
Right, but there's no estimate, no ask for that, for the budget?
We, we planned it out over five years, just like we planned out professional development and pre-K. But we have that information. We just discussed it last week. And I think what we aim to do is to combine that information with the superintendent's budget and figure out what we need to come to you all with, the must-haves, the wish list, but definitely CTE, Career Technical High School, is one of our biggest priorities. And it will be a drawback for students to go to public schools, and it will provide students with workforce readiness. So.
You know, but I agree, I don't think that's something that you're going to wedge into your, your budget. I think that is a big issue. That's a big ticket issue that we all have got to get behind.
I mean, I, I'm glad to hear what you're saying, but I, other than that little bitty point on here, I, I didn't see it as an emphasis. Perception is reality with our school system. And I think a career and technical program gives us the possibility of improving that perception. And I think that's something that we as a group really need to be focusing on. And it's, it's a chance for us to involve the community, it's a chance for us to involve our industry leaders, it's a collaborative, it could be a collaborative effort that I think goes a long way in restoring what I think should be confidence in our schools, but perhaps isn't.
Well, if I, if I could, we have talked about the fact that I think we need to build community support for this completely. This is not anything that we can do alone. And then I think the more that we involve the community in terms of the businesses and others, this will be wholly successful, knowing that we can't fund it alone. And I was just talking to the mayor prior to the meeting here, that we do need to reach out. I think there are industries in our region that have said, yes, we'd be willing to support. Where are you with it? So I think if we get those people around the table and start having hard conversations about real numbers and who's interested, then we can make it happen.
They've been approached, and so now we need to pick up that initiative.
We do.
Otherwise, we're going to lose.
I agree.
And I mean, and the three major cost drivers, and the biggest of which is, of course, is the building of the school. And we've identified through a feasibility study, the, what we deem to be the best location for the school. So in addition to building the school, we're talking about outfitting it with the necessary equipment for the pathways and programs. And so now we have to really determine where we can get that funding support. And, but, but it is a major priority of ours, believe me.
Brett.
I just want to add, as much as I support the pre-K initiative and would love to fund it all this year, our, our needs are, are great. The state keeps requiring increased technology, Mr. Riddick, and that's why we have to spend the money on the infrastructure and, and the equipment to meet those needs, both testing-wise and instructional-wise. The state keeps mandating increased VRS. The more mandates we get, the unfunded mandates that are forced upon us requires us to make hard decisions. And I would love to build a CTE school tomorrow. We just, we've got a school system that is, that is finally getting its, its feet underneath it and moving forward in a positive direction. That's why we're coming to you with the, with the hard facts. And we, as a board, have to prioritize what we can do now and what we can do five years from now. That's why this whole process is going on.
Sometimes you have to go to Richmond and push back. I'm familiar with unfunded mandates, been here a long time. Sometimes you have to push back. Sometimes you have to go to your members of your, your delegation and tell them what's important, and.
I assure you, we have.
Right.
Okay. By the way, I think we have just under 2,400. I looked at my notes, kids and pre-K. Did I say 28? All right, well, this has been a good conversation, and the manager should shrank him a little bit.
Pre-k is free.
But just an invitation to, a mail to you and the council, if you're interested, on February 19th, we'll be hosting the new VSBA president, and our early meeting will be at PB Young Elementary School, 8:45. And Mr. Jordan is coordinating that effort for us. And so any members of council that's interested, we'd love to have you join us and meet the new VSBA president. That's the 19th of February.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for a good conversation. I told you, Mrs. Green, she's going to challenge you, Dr. King. She's going to lean on. All right, well, thank you. We'll allow you all to pick up your stuff, and then we'll, then the council, that's more work.
Katie Riley, the term.